Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Melville School District Board of Education, August 21st meeting to order. If we could please plan, stand, and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our flag.
Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'm going to do a roll call. Tori Belkey?
Here.
I'm Peggy Hassler.
Patrick McElvy.
The President.
Jean Preto.
Here.
Serene Wilkinson.
Present.
Jeff Woolman.
Present.
And Ann Zimfer.
Here.
If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Open period for patron comments. We do not have anybody signed up. So we're going to move on to governance. First up is Prop S update with Mike Gag.
Good evening, Board of Education. I am Mike Gag, Director of Facilities. I'm here tonight to present our Prop S update. We'll get started with our completed projects, and you can see we are nearing the end of our Prop S projects. I did not add Beerbomb Phase Two yet. We are very close. I will flip to that. So on Phase Two, we are, we did occupy all the spaces. It was ready for the first day of school on Monday. The list that they completed in the last few weeks, you can see, we got some tile work completed, some flooring, stair tread, casework, doors. Window sills were completed last week, countertops and sinks as well. What we're waiting on in progress is the playground has been installed. We got some turf coming September 15th. Once that's installed, then we'll get the fencing installed after the turf. The circulation desk is in production. Hope to see that in the next week or so. Library shelving is same as, same as well in a couple of weeks. Then the library replacement shade, we had a stain on one of the shades, so they're ordering a replacement for that. Then the half wall up at the breakout room, the cap is still on order, and they put a temporary wood cap, which does look very nice. But once the new solid surface comes in, that will be then installed, and that will wrap up Phase Two, and then we will call it complete. Mosaic Elementary, Elway at her Phase Two, Board approved it. Lawler back on six twenty-six. Construction perimeter fence was put up a couple of weeks ago. We're still waiting on a couple of permits. Job trailer should be on site next Thursday or Friday, and then there's, they're starting to stage a few materials on site. And then completion is scheduled for summer 2026. There's our financials updated, and I will answer any questions you might have.
Is there, excuse me, is there an update on the delivery of the Transportation Department trailer?
I think it's still scheduled for sometime in November.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is summer project update. Mike Gag again.
Again, I'm Mike Gag. I will do the summer project update. So Woolen, we did a couple roofs this past summer. Woolen was two hundred and six square, and Washington was eighty-seven square. Both schools were completed during the summer. They just wrapped up on the sheet metal of Washington today, and they're staging tomorrow for Woolen, and that sheet metal will be completed next week, and that'll be completion of those two roofs. Asphalt, we did, we kind of seal and stripe every other year, half the district. Those are the schools that got some seal or stripe, or maybe a little bit of asphalt work this summer, and then, of course, next summer, we'll do the other half of the district. HVAC upgrades, the five schools, Blades, Oakville Middle, Oakville High, Traunwind, and Washington, those are all complete systems, which we did, you know, the chillers, boilers, all the rooms, units, air handlers, everything. So those were completed. They've still got a few punchless items they're working on, a few control issues they're trying to resolve, but everything is up and running. The new boilers that early childhood are installed, and the new chill at Rogers is installed, and all those are up and running as well. Just trying to tweak a few little issues with those. Any questions on those?
So as far as the HVAC, we are moving right along, and we, what buildings do we still have replacements that we plan to do, like next year?
So next year, we got Melville High School, partial, because we did the back wing already, and we'll do the front section. That'll be, that'll be pretty much chillers, classrooms, boilers, et cetera. And then Beasley, and then finished the middle of Beerbomb Elementary, all the classrooms and the chiller. The boiler were done during, during Phase One and Two, so boilers have been replaced already.
That's great.
That'll, that'll complete our, yeah.
Because we went from having everything being, what, twenty to thirty years old, to being everything being under ten years old?
Yeah, we did Berkeley back in 2017.
Yeah, fantastic. So, thank you.
Nine years, and then everything else newer. So all the major HVAC, we shouldn't have to worry about this for probably at least ten years if we're going.
I'd say about ten years, yeah.
It's good to hear, Mike. Thank you.
But we still need to continue to
Oh, yeah.
Plan to
Definitely, yeah.
Do
Definitely continue to plan.
Upgrades versus having to catch up every building
Yes.
After thirty years. So, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next is SRSN update. Dr. Brian Smith.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Brian Smith. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Academics, and I am privileged tonight to be able to talk to you a little bit about the Success Ready Students Network, SRSN. So this presentation is solely intended to be able to provide you kind of an update. There's no board action that would be required. So the overview, and I'll call it the SRSN, just as it's easier to say it that way. I always appreciate this opportunity just to remind and educate you as the board to be able to know what the work that the SRSN does, and it's all about personalized competency-based learning. The network, which currently extends well past a hundred-plus organizations and schools, they, very strongly in that vision statement is to build upon the knowledge, the skills, and dispositions needed to be able to make kids high school, college, and career-ready, and workplace-ready. So that's a lofty and aspirational thing that we want for every single one of our kids. So the, there are essential questions that do guide this. It's all around the, the fact of competency-based learning. And so, you know, it digs into, well, what is competency-based learning? Well, competency is, you know, have you mastered the essentials of a class, or of a test, or of a unit? It's more about having competencies as opposed to seat minutes. So, you know, when we look at the network and all the work in which they are doing, you can see there's pieces that they want to ensure that guides their work, the professional development for teachers, trying to be able to take barriers that exist and to be able to do their best to be able to get rid of those barriers. You'll note specifically in number four, and I know there were some questions about this one, about the assessment system. This is where, you know, also the alternative APR kind of comes into play. So, you know, this is a network of schools that are interested in wanting to be able to push not only alternative ways to be able to assess schools, but also ways to be able to help support kids and to be able to really focus on things like real-world learning. This is not a new concept. It has been every bit of at least the last fifteen years. Back in the 2012, 2013 school year, DESI chartered a proficiency-based task force. So this work is not new. It's at least fifteen years old, if maybe not probably a little bit older than that. It has evolved over the years in terms of various, various pieces, and so you can get an idea. It's been called maybe a number of different things, depending on who was in charge. But at the end of the day, right now, we are at a place where it's called the Success Ready Students Network, and I think the, the difference there is that this is more of a grassroots push rather than a top-down push. And sometimes that does make it more manageable and more effective in the long run. To be able to update you on what the Success Ready Student Network plans are for this particular year, they offer a variety of opportunities, includes community learning sessions, which our administrators are welcome to be able to attend. Those are offered virtually. We have monthly work groups with a variety of individuals. All of that work really goes into continuing the support of the alternative APR that has been created. I'll talk more about APR in just a little bit, but that's really the, one of the primary drivers of some of those subgroups, those sub-work groups that we have. They also have innovation zones and learning design zones, and those are people who continue to come on, who maybe weren't joining in the first round, or maybe who didn't join in the second round. We're at the cohort four at this particular point in time, which right now that covers about fifty to sixty schools, I believe, just in those. There are others who obviously are continuing to kind of sit in the sidelines and kind of look at some of the work, but more and more school districts are joining this, kind of this movement. There are also annual state learning opportunities, as well as, that should be semi-annual, real-world learning regional meetings a couple of times a year that are, but you know, St. Louis, Kansas City. That alternative APR that I listed before, you can see that that is, has been ongoing. It's in process. The criteria has been set on our own website. You can find underneath Departments, and then you go to Curriculum. You can find there's a section on the Success Ready Students Network. That's a piece where you, the several of these next slides, that's where you can find that information. So those that are watching online can also go to that same spot, Departments, go to Curriculum, go to SRSN. You'll notice here that one of the big pieces that came from us joining the network also, good or bad, is that the APR reports are not necessarily published on DESI's website. It was part of the agreement was that DESI is supporting this from the sidelines a little bit, but because of the desire for there to be an alternative APR, those initial twenty districts, if you were to go look for their, their APR scores, starting in 2024, you will not find them. They do share that information with us as a district, and we certainly celebrate a lot of good things that come from it. It's just not published on DESI's website, and that's a decision at the state level. The criteria, the indicators that are used as part of this alternative APR, you can see that are listed. I'll kind of take you through these just one at a time very briefly. We have a dashboard that's built out that specifically measures our academic benchmarking process. This is using iReady in grades three through eight, and that covers both English Language Arts as well as Mathematics. So they will take a snapshot in the fall, and then the winter, and then the spring. Right now on the website, one year of data is there. Within the next couple of weeks, you will then see two years' worth of data that will exist. That's one of the requirements, is we have multiple years' worth of data. You will also see that the ICAP, the Individualized Career and Academic Plan, that's a requirement as well, both on DESI's end as well as the alternative end, and so it gets an idea of what percentage of kids are really, do they have a plan to help guide what it is they're going to do after high school? And you can see it's, it's virtually a hundred percent. We have a little bit of work to do to, to be able to get that to a hundred. You can also see that the district offers a lot of different opportunities. Some of those, what opportunities are called market value assets, and that is kind of a fancy buzzword to get, you know, credentials and to be able to show that you have done things that will make you either college or career-ready. And so between all of our programs we offer through St. Louis Community College and partnerships with local universities, the Early College Program, we have just under half of our kids out of that class of 2024. We do continue to expect that number will continue to rise as we get more and more kids engaged in things that will impact their future. There are opportunities that we also offer, and that includes things like HOSA, FCCLA, FBLA. These are all high school student organizations who have a very specific focus of a career education readiness piece. And so we also have South Tech in our CAPS program. We offer my path. And, and so we have a variety of programs that allow kids to be able to help them figure out what they want to be able to do after the high school years are over. Few more pieces that we have. You can see that through that, it's a small percentage still that really do participate in some of those credentials. We do want to continue to grow that. You know, twenty-three percent, we would like to continue to see that number, you know, raise, and I do, I'm confident that that will occur. Another piece is kind of the work, overall work piece, which includes what assessments are kids going to be able to take. And so you get an idea of, here's different types of assessments. The AccuPlacer is a college, or is a community college piece. The ACT, I think you're all familiar with from a four-year institution rate. The Work Keys is a, an employee workplace readiness test. The ASVAB is for the military, and obviously SAT is a very small percentage of kids, but that's also, it can replace the ACT as well. It's typically intended for West Coast and, and East Coast schools, but it can be taken anywhere. And so you can see we have right about ninety-five percent of our kids who are taking one of those types of tests. Couple of last things. They do look at student achievement, just like we do look at student achievement. They do look at it just a little bit differently. One way that they do look at it a little bit differently is the Success Ready Student Network will take the advanced percentage plus the proficient percentage, and then we'll add on the basic percentage, because the research that is provided, that has been provided shows that that basic level means that they are somewhere within that grade level band. They may not be at the end of that grade level, but they are somewhere within that level. And so that's part of the, that alternative APR that has been developed. That was a, a system that the network had approved. And so, and the final, one of the final pieces is the graduation rate. You can see that we continue to support our kids. We continue to see a high-level percentage of kids who are graduating within schools, within four years typically, but we also track the five-year, the six-year, and the seven-year rate. So you can find more information out if you have any questions specific at srsnmo.org, and I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for that. I wasn't aware of this website, but now that I am, I might be able to find some of my answers there. But based on this, the, the growing number of school districts that are, you know, joining the Success Ready Network, I remember how skeptical, you know, we were at first, but apparently it's growing in leaps and bounds. Has there been any indication from DESI what it's going to, I mean, do they have a criteria set as to when they're going to start making report, you know, reporting the data? Are, are using the data that they find to, to report on the APR reports? Or is anybody saying anything about it, or, you know, is, do you speak to people there, or is it just, you know, all written?
Sure. I, I'm the primary Melville representative that works with the, the network, so I try to attend as many of those various opportunities, you know, that you, you will see that was listed. There is not a lot of, of conversation right now around the alternative APR. What there has been, much more conversation recently about within the last month, is the alternative assessment that is going to be piloted starting this particular school year by five districts, and then over the next five years, they have a plan to be able to reshape the assessment system. Now, that's DESI's primary move, is to be able to do this work, but it certainly has been shaped in the efforts that the Success Ready Students Network, they are the ones who brought the benchmarking piece. We were benchmarking before that, but they are the ones who really have encouraged, because rather than the one time a year, quote-unquote, autopsy.
Really was the point, wasn't it? You know, to
Yes.
Get our results faster.
It was. That is exactly right.
And so I'm just wondering, what's it going to, you know, who has to be hit over the head to say, hey, this is what we need, you know?
Sure.
Give us our, give, report the results and give it to us quicker.
The State Board of Education is ultimately the one who will make that decision as to whether or not the APR will be published. Right now, so long as we are part of that alternative program, I know, I think Dr. Hogg may want to jump in here as well, because you were grabbing for that mic, but we, we will, we'll have to just continue to work with the State Board of Education to be able to try to encourage. I know we have asked for those results to be public.
That's all you can do.
Because we have, we have a lot to be proud of in the work in which people have done.
Exactly. You know, you know, I'd like to have that well-known, you know, but don't hold a disappointment, I guess. It's hard for me.
How much work are we going to have to do to accommodate the changes with Senate Bill 68 and grade level equivalency on the assessments?
There won't be any additional requirements that we are aware of at this particular point in time. That is more of a reporting mechanism, and DESI is still working through those particular pieces. So it won't require any additional work on our part. It's more about how do, how does that get reported out? And they are still working through all of the, the possible scenarios for that.
So it's going to be just how we put the data out there. It's just going to have the grade, grade level equivalency piece, and it probably won't be until twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Correct. It, it may potentially change a little bit about what we will do with the alternative APR, but we'll have to wait for the network to be able to get together and make some decisions around that, and then also have that approved by the State Board of Education.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And there are gobs of questions on e-boards that were asked pre-meeting for the public's view, if they would like to read them. Anybody else have anything?
Twenty-one pages of your program.
The ICAP, what does that look like for our, wow, that's really loud, look like for our students? What does that look like for our students? The counselors do that with the students, and that is part of their, like, planning when they're signing up for classes and
That is correct. It starts in middle school, and it continues to work its way from middle school into the high school setting. And so, you know, it really, it's, while it's called an ICAP, it almost becomes a seven-year plan to be able to, as you start hitting middle school, you start thinking about what are things you want to be able to do as you get older. And then we all know that, you know, twelve-to-fourteen-year-olds can change their minds a lot, and so things, we, we tend to, we help them navigate those systems and expose them to a lot of variety of college and career readiness pieces, lots of programs that, and we have a variety of, you know, three-hundred-plus classes and oodles and oodles of programs.
Does any of that influence come, not like just from the counseling office, but like from, say, something that gets pushed into A and P class, or like other times when people are talking to them about things?
There are times where it does happen. It, it would not say that it's intentional all the time.
Okay.
But there are opportunities that counselors have to be able to speak to middle school kids and to high school kids, specifically about, you know, career readiness assessments and things of that nature. What do your results look like? And this is, this, these may be areas in which you might be good at pursuing. And those things really help
Right.
Influence kids and really help educate sometimes families as well to say, I don't know what I want to do. Well, I took this career readiness assessment, and now I can, I got a better idea of what I want to be able to do.
Yeah.
So I may try to figure out how does that match up with classes we own.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to ASBR report, year-end June financial statements. Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, Chief Financial Officer, and I am presenting the year-end financial statements. So really, it's been a very consistent year from, almost from the get-go. We've been forecasting a net loss, a net lot, operating loss, up between nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to one-point-one million. We landed at a million oh nineteen net loss. And that's okay. We had a lot of reasons and discussions for that during the year. So the good news is, it's, it's been very, very consistent, no surprises. The second good piece of news is that in June, DESI, it, it doesn't sound like good news, but DESI withheld a million dollars from the early childhood payment, and they're going, it's a timing difference, so instead of paying us in June, they're going to pay us in July. So we're still going to get the money, but that did, that affected the operating gains. So basically, had we received that money in June, our net loss would have been like sixteen thousand dollars net loss. So we still ended at the same net loss that we were predicting, but now we have a million-dollar surprise coming to us in July, so we start the new year off with a very good one-million-dollar surprise. And then the third piece is just looking at the cash reserve. So cash reserve is still at a healthy thirty-one point nine percent. So we're in very, very good position there. So those are the highlights of the year-end statements along with what I had written up on the agenda. So with that, are there any questions?
Anybody? There, again, there were lots of questions asked pre-meeting, so I don't think any of us were surprised by any of these because you report on them monthly, so we appreciate that. Again, for the public's viewing, these reports are online and on our agenda, and you're welcome to view them. So I'm not sure, do I need to make a motion? Do we need to approve these reports?
Yes, I need to have the statements and the ASBR approved.
Okay. So if I could please get a motion to approve the ASBR 2425 as what?
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Are we going to do them separate? Do you want them separate?
The recommendation is? That's a Dr. Hogg question.
Be accepted as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Thank you. Next is defeasance resolution for debt repay, prepayment.
All right. This presentation is on debt prepayment, and it started last summer. And so this is the second year of a two-year plan that we met with the Finance Committee last summer, and they endorsed. So this would be the second year of making a debt prepayment of around $625,000 for principal. This would save around $280,000 of interest expense. So that's the, that is the plan for this year, and then if Prop A ends up moving forward and passing, we would probably not be making debt prepayments. That 2.4 cents would then be rolled into the Prop A renewal if we go down that route. If not, then we would reassess next summer and see if we want to continue debt prepayments. So really, that's, with that, do you have questions? And I'm ultimately looking to get the debt prepayment approved.
Is the amount we're saving can probably going to be consistent if we continue with future instances like this?
I would guess that like every single year, if we continue to make that, the, the amount will come down because right now that's $280,000 of savings over the majority of the 20-year pay schedule. But as you work your way through, there's less, there's less principal and there's less years.
Because we're playing more principal than interest as we get further into the?
Right. So it'll get less and less as the years go by.
So it's going to be noticeable, but not as noticeable as time goes on if we continue?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. If I could please get a motion to approve prepaying debt principal not to exceed $700,000 to save about $280,000 interest expense by approving the resolution authorizing the defeasance of a portion of the outstanding general obligation bonds, Series 2021, and other actions in connection therewith, including the direct deposit agreement and the escrow agreement that is ultimately required to execute the approved prepayment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Prop A Community Survey. Jessica Papillo.
Good evening, Melville Board of Education. I am Jessica Papillo, Chief Communications Officer, and I am presenting the Prop A Community Survey this evening. So Opinion Research Specialist has conducted a mailed and online survey for us in June and July. Most of the details in this report relate to the mailed survey. We had 1,137 completed online and mailed back surveys, which is a 33% response rate. We continue to see a really strong response rate on the surveys we send out in the postal service. This is the sixth survey of our audience since 2014, and on this particular survey, we have a margin of error of plus or minus 3% with a 95% confidence interval. When we look at the demographic profile of respondents, the Melville zip is defined as our 63125 and our 63123. Oakville is 63129, and you can see that spread. We do have more voters in the 63129 zip code. Most of the respondents did not have a child in Melville School District, and the ages of respondents trends up with that mean being at about 66 years old. More females responded to the survey than male, and 80% were not Melville School District The text that we asked was outlining what the proposal was and then asking how strongly they would support it. So Melville School District is considering a proposal to fund important school maintenance needs. The plan would make permanent a temporary tax levy voters approved in 2016, which currently helps pay for building repairs like roof replacements and reassigning 2.4 cents of an existing debt service tax that's no longer needed for bond payments to the district's operating lobby. Together, those changes would raise about 1.4 million each year. Funds would be restricted to ongoing needs such as roof repairs, school buses, tech upgrades, parking lot maintenance, HVAC improvements, and building and security without increasing the current tax rate. If the election were held today, how strongly would you support or oppose this proposal? And of those that responded with the return mail envelope or online, 48% strongly supported, 15% somewhat supported. So that's a favorable response from 60. Why is math so hard? 63%. Thank you. With a plus or minus margin of error of 3%. So I'm going to recover here. So we can say that we're 95% confident that if that election were held in June or July when we did this survey, that the actual result would fall between 60% and 66% favorable. Thanks. 25% strongly opposed, 8% somewhat opposed, and we had 4% undecided. This slide breaks out by demographic, how, how people supported or opposed the proposal by gender, by location, whether they had a child in the district. We've seen this trend hold in previous surveys we've done where women are more supportive, parents are more supportive, younger voters are more supportive of our proposals, and that holds true, this proposal. I wanted to put this screen up because our survey hit mailboxes and was delayed by the postal service a little bit. So we wanted to be sure, we looked at just the respondents that mailed the survey back because there was some concern that people may have responded online and via mail. So when we look at just the mailed-only responses, we're looking at 59% supporting the proposal, whether that's strongly or somewhat. The margin of error on that is 3.4%. So we could say if the election were to have happened during that time, we're 95% sure that the result would land between about a little less than 50%, 56% up to about a little more than 62%. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jess, I just wanted to say, a common theme whenever Peggy Torrey and I presented on passing ballot initiatives at a prior MSBA conference, and I, one of our main recommendations was surveying and working in higher ed, doing research. I recognize that a 30% response rate is extremely high from a mail survey, like you're normally looking at five, you're 20 if you're lucky. And I think that's really a part of your consistent surveying that we do frequently. So I just want to thank you for all your hard work using the same company consistently, going back to our community and asking for their opinion and putting this data in front of us. Obviously, hearing from the Finance Committee is extremely important. Hearing from Dr. Hogg, Marshall, and everyone else, but then seeing the community surveys on such a year-in, year-out basis is very helpful when making any decisions we make. So I just want to say thank you.
And as we've seen with R, with S, and with E, we've outperformed the percentages usually by about 11 to 13% when we actually put it on the ballot. So if we're in the 60s now, then I think we should be solid on proceeding and getting what we need.
The amount of survey, the returning survey people, that's not coming out right. You know what I'm saying?
Respondents?
You can't do math, I can't talk. The responses, that. That's actually was elevated and higher than our past surveys. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we did a lot of communicating when we realized that the mail survey landed in mailboxes a little late, later than anticipated. There was a story in the call. There were articles we shared in social media posts encouraging people to still turn that in. So that could have been why we saw a boost in that response.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Prop A Proposed Ballot Language. Dr. Jeff Hogg, our superintendent.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Dr. Jeff Hogg. I'm the superintendent of schools. This evening, I want to present Proposition A Proposed Ballot Language. So as you've heard from our chief financial officer and our chief communication officer this evening, we have put quite a bit of work into planning and prepping for this. So just kind of little background, in 2016, our community passed Prop A, which is a four-cent, 10-year temporary tax levy. After fiscal year FY '26, the Prop A tax levy will sunset. And so the district is bringing the recommendation to the Board of Education to take to the voters a proposal that does not raise the current tax rate, makes the temporary tax levy permanent, and redirects 2.4 cents from debt service levy to the operating fund. Specifically, Prop A would make permanent the temporary capital levy. That levy brings in approximately $822,000 annually. The levy in 2024 was 3.26 cents. Prop A would also redirect 2.4 cents from the 12-cent Proposition S debt service levy to operating funds. As the district pays down its existing bond obligations, the district could transfer 2.4 cents to the operating and make the required debt service payments. This transfer of 2.4 cents would add an estimated $605,000 in annual revenue. That's what Marshall was talking about earlier as well. Prop A would require that the funds generated by the estimated combined 5.66 cents be used to replace buses, maintain infrastructure like roofing, parking lots, technology, security, and HVAC. Again, it would be limited to those and specifically for those areas. So this guarantees ongoing annual specific maintenance, even in times of economic hardship. Together, these changes would provide an estimated $1.4 million without increasing the current tax rate. Why does this matter? Many of the district's capital needs are ongoing and they're predictable. Each year, the district expects to spend $850,000 on roofing, $700,000 on school buses, $325,000 on parking lot maintenance, and $450,000 on technology equipment and infrastructure. Melville School District spends about $2.3 million annually on these predictable and necessary maintenance needs. The proposed $1.4 million covers about 61% of the listed recurring needs and would provide a consistent, stable, and long-term funding stream. Prop A would ensure safe, maintained schools for our Melville School District students. Without raising the current tax rate, Prop A would fund the ongoing maintenance of roofs, buses, parking lots, and technology and safety infrastructure. The recommendation this evening is to approve the proposed A ballot language as presented and be placed by the Board of Education on the November 2025 ballot. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or entertain any conversation amongst the board.
So lots and lots of questions on e-boards again from the members, from the directors of the board. And we've also had presentations from Marshall, our Finance Committee. For the public's viewing, if they would back up to five, to our governance under 5D, you'll see a report on page three of exactly, basically a recap of our reoccurring annual capital costs for roofing, buses, asphalt, IT equipment. And as you said, it'd be about $2.3 million, and this will assure us one point, about 1.4 million.
We spend about 2.3 annually. This would give us the 1.4.
Right. And then it would also be written in the ballot language as presented that that is all we can use that money for, so we can never rob Peter to pay Paul in a different scenario. So for, for future planning, it's smart planning, and I think by letting the community vote on it, the community gets to tell us what they want to see out of their school district. You know, we've spent years clawing back because of neglected facilities and underpaying our staff. And so since 2014, literally, I feel like we've been clawing and climbing that ladder, and we're getting there. There's still a lot of work to be done, but this would set us right for having a progressive, stable stream of income that we could keep our asphalt and our buses. I mean, back in 2014, I believe, where's Marshall? We hadn't had a bus, a new bus, in how many years?
Twenty-nine to one. Five years before I got here, we bought one bus over that five-year period. During my first five years, we bought 29 and started to catch up. So it was 29 buses in that five-year period compared to one bus in the other five years.
Right.
And that's to your, your block.
Yeah. And then, like we talked about with Mike and HVAC, we were so far behind in that, and we are going to be caught up as of next summer. This will help us keep cyclically caught up every year so that we don't fall behind for our future, you know, for the future of this community and the future of our children and their education. So I also feel that, you know, strong, nice facilities are conducive to a better learning environment for all the kids. So it, it reflects on academics too, in my opinion. So thank you for this presentation. I just want to make sure the public understands that this is a smart decision if we do vote to put this on the ballot and that obviously the community gets to decide if they want to support it or not. But it's long-term planning that is a necessity.
Plus, since we earmark this, this is the only use of it, so it means we can use our other money for other purposes that are not defined with it. So it makes the maintenance stuff a no-brainer when it comes to funding it, at least for the majority of it.
And just to piggyback on what you, like, all have been saying, the idea that we spent so many years, like, having to react to, you know, financial decisions and poor financial decisions to pivot and make things doable or work to stretch out and get by, we're finally at a spot where we're not doing that anymore, and it gives us the opportunity to stay on steady ground. And it's really important for the community to recognize what they've done to impact that and where we're at now versus where we were before, and the opportunity to do it, you know, to move forward.
I, I would like to just insert that, you know, I was here in 2014 when we started crawling our way back out of that hole, and Marshall and I started about the same time. And at the risk of throwing shade, I, I don't know what people were thinking. I mean, you know, we were tooling around in buses that were, you know, like milk crates, you know, they, with wheels on them, and just to set back a few cents a year, I mean, a few cents each year for the, the peace of mind that your kids were going to get to school safely every day, it just didn't make any sense. I couldn't figure out why they weren't planning ahead, instead riding on a fleet of buses that were just terrible. But anyway, this makes so much sense that I couldn't, somebody really had to explain to me why they wouldn't want it, just to see our schools into the future with almost pain-free, so.
I wanted to piggyback one more time. So when I first came onto the board, it was a little bit different. I was a student during that time. But when I first came on the board, it was Prop S. I ran and opposed, so it was really an election of focusing on Prop S with Torrey. But something we saw consistently, thanks to Jess, going back to surveys, was the number one priority in our district is student safety. To me, school buses are completely part of school safety. You want to make sure your kids get to school safe. You talk about security. Chad has done such an excellent job of explaining to me why external lighting and why that's so important, and security cameras, which can help teachers in our school identify things that happen and how that is all related to safety. And then I don't think I, we have to say it, roofs is obvious where we've been lucky that we can replace tiles consistently. But thinking about HVAC, you talked about it from the fact of a learning standpoint. We know our children are not going to learn that well if they're not in a climate-controlled environment, but just? environment, but just making sure that our buildings are in a safe, conducive environment for our students. So I really look at Prop A as a continuation of Prop S, where this is really an investment mostly in school safety. You look at all these items, and you look that it's 61% funding. This is all about investing in our students' safety, and like, it's very easy for me to see the connection between that and buses, security, whether that's external lighting or security, or our parking lots, which all of our students and teachers use every day, and IC conditions, everything else like that. Like, a reseal every other year is very important to our district. So I really see this as just a continuation of work, and we talked about it for what it feels like over two years with the Finance Committee, so I'm super proud to support this.
All right. Jess?
I also wanted to say, I think it's important for the community to understand that if this passes, the money is set aside for these specific things, which you all just described why they're important. But I also think it's important to know that we won't have to worry about or worry as much about taking money from other things, other crucial aspects that make our schools really special, all the extracurricular activities and all the things that are really important to our students. So when we make important financial decisions, all of those things kind of can stay more on the table with this dedicated funds. So I think it's important to understand that. I mean, my son enjoys band, and it's crucial, like, one of the most funnest times of his day, and so I would hate to see any other extracurricular activities or other classes be cut because they need to be able to spend that money on, say, a new roof, and we don't have those funds set aside.
Yeah. Okay. Wrap it up.
Yeah. I want to be able to take a chance, too, to speak to this. You were talking about how, so for so many years, things were reactive and how you had to take care of items in that respect. This is the best way to be proactive on everything and have consistency across the board in being able to spend money in this, in this way. And just to, by being proactive, we're not going to be fighting that ladder. We hope to not climb that ladder again. We're there, and we can keep it consistent. So, yeah, I think this is a great thing for our district, indeed.
All right. So if I could please, no, I totally lost my place, sorry, get a motion to approve the proposed Prop A ballot language as presented to be filed with the Board of Elections to be placed on the November 2025 ballot.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on to Strategic Plan 2026-2031 Update. Jessica Papillo.
Good evening again. I'm Jessica Papillo, Chief Communications Officer, and tonight, I really just have a quick update about the strategic planning process. So January 2025, we extended invitations for a committee to form and provided an overview to the Board of Education. In February, March, we conducted a community survey and gathered feedback from parents, staff, community members about what their priorities were for the school district in the next five years. In April, we brought that committee together. We had over 100 people at the Bernard Middle School cafeteria to talk through and prioritize the survey results that we received, and we landed on five big themes with that group. Over the summer, a team of leaders in the district looked at all of those survey responses. We looked at all of the documents that were provided at that April meeting and all of the feedback that the community provided us, and we started drafting goals that seemed to match what the community was asking of us, and we've been preparing community presentations. So we're really excited to get back with that Strategic Plan Steering Committee again. Starting on September 3, we will be presenting information about our first theme, academics, sharing information about where the district is at currently with academics, and some draft goals of where we could go in the future while gathering feedback from that committee as well. Now, this committee is open for anyone to join at any time. We would love to see a big group again at Bernard Middle School, September 3 at 6:30, to talk through the academic theme and really help us fine-tune our goals and ensure that we are being true to the feedback that we're receiving from the community. Throughout the fall, we'll also revise those draft goals based on the feedback we receive at the series of five meetings coming up. Then we plan to present a draft to the Board of Education in December and request approval in March for the plan that would be implemented beginning next school year. So important dates coming up. All of these meetings are on Wednesdays at 6:30. They're all at Bernard Middle School. We're going to kick it off with academics on September 3. September 17, we'll be talking about student support. September 24, we'll be talking about employee quality and staffing. Then on the 8th of October, we'll be talking about facilities, operations, and finance, and wrapping up on October 22 with community involvement. Thank you very much.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? I do want to comment that I very much appreciate all the work that everybody, really, all of our administrators have done on this strategic plan. I like how transparent it is and that we are asking the community for their feedback and what, again, what do they want to see in their school district. I just really feel that that's important, so thank you. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of time, evening time, that you guys all have been working on this, so thank you, thank you. All right. Moving on to MSBA advocacy positions submissions. Jeff Holman.
All right. Every summer, the MSBA starts asking for submissions to be made for their advocacy positions, which they present at the MSBA meeting in October for all the districts that go to the delegate assembly to vote on. Last year, when we submitted a change to this, it was the cell phone provision that basically we suggested that MSBA start advocating towards legislation that helps towards cell phones. And oddly enough, this year, they voted on it, and Senate Bill 68 was passed with that requirement in there, and we're at where we are now. So that was an odd timing that we got ahead of the curve with that recommendation, and it happened. So this summer, the advocacy committee at our last meeting in May started talking about the possibility of doing something else to make more modifications to the advocacy positions. I basically looked this over multiple times over the summer, and had sent a recommendation that I thought would make sense back in early August. The committee discussed it via email and, seeing no changes that they suggested, recommended we send along the positions. They're available on eBoards for your review. Basically, they cover four areas. One of them covers related to adequate and equitable public school funding. The statement that exists is basically that MSBA believes that there should be a review of Missouri's approach to funding public education encourages a more simplified and equitable system. This is something that the state government is actually going through right now, and their commission is supposed to go through this process until the end of next year. Prior to this review, the foundation formula hadn't been revised in 20 years. What I'm suggesting MSBA put in its advocacy positions is to make it a regular recurring review with an interval of the regular review should occur at a minimum of every 10 years. So every 10 years, it's recommended that the state go through and make a review of the foundation formula and make changes that are appropriate, because 20 years ago versus now, the funding model has completely upended itself and changed. And we need to get in the habit of having the state government go through every 10 years, preferably. Less frequently seems to be getting us in the same trap, more frequently seems to be wasted effort. So recommendation is have MSBA start advocating towards that review happening every 12, every 10 years. And also, there is an item that says, "MSBA opposes the direct or indirect use of public funding for non-public K-12 education because it is detrimental to public education." I'm suggesting they add in a sentence that says, "This would include the redirection of taxpayer funds from general revenue into programs that can fund non-public K-12 education," because the governor has approved a measure that takes $50 million out of general revenue and puts it into the most scholars program, which is the tax credit-based scholars, most scholars program that offers up vouchers for people to take and go to private school, religious funding, or personal expenses if they homeschool. So this is against the way that most scholars was built, and it potentially starts a way for the state government to start funneling more revenue out of general, more money out of general revenue towards this. So it's a recommendation that MSBA take a position to oppose it with some more direct language on it. It's also duplicated in a further Section C that has basically the same sentence added to it, and then also in Section K under non-public school funding, it's another addition of that. MSBA also opposes the funding of any voucher program with taxpayer funds redirected from general revenue. So it's basically asking MSBA to take a statement to be advocating against the use of general funds from, general revenue funds towards vouchers because it takes away from public education. The last item covers retired teachers being available to teach after they've retired and not affect their retirement benefits. Back in 2023, there was a piece of Senate Bill 681 from the prior year that allowed teachers to teach for, I believe, 500 hours yearly and not affect their retirement benefits. That was allowed to go until the end of June of this year. They renewed it till 2030. I'm making a recommendation that they get rid of that requirement that it needs to be renewed every five years and change it. So it says that MSBA supports legislation that makes permanent the waiver of limitation that allows PSRS, PERS members to work as substitute teachers after retirement. Obviously, since retired, since teachers have been available for that, we've had less problems with subs. So that seems to be a benefit, and it seems like a benefit we should make permanent. What happens is, this goes to MSBA for review. They decide if their positions that they want to take up, they'll go ahead and approve them and send them to the delegate assembly in October at the annual meeting for people to vote on and approve it. But since this is an action that the board needs to take, because I can't forward anything that the board doesn't approve, I'm going to make a motion to approve all the MSBA advocacy positions, position changes as presented. Any questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Next is six action items by consent, A through M. Does anyone need to poll anything? Nothing? If I could please get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through M.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right. Thank you. Moving on, we don't have anybody signed up for comments, I assume. Right. Okay. Jeff, if you could put us into closed.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri revised statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, 610.0213, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, 610.02113.
Okay. Ann?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Serene?
Yes.
Okay. Can I please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.